I am Kim Melnick, School Board Vice Chair, and this administrative informal and workshop session of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at four o'clock on this 10th day of January 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on www.vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Morton, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Okay. Okay, all right. Before we get started, if everyone just looks at their microphone keypad, on the left-hand side, there's a diamond. If you press that, that's the bell you will hear. Actually, that'll be used for point of privilege when we speak. But that, that...
Good job, Trinity.
Yep, okay.
Just wanted to make sure mine worked.
They work. Okay, so we will begin straight away with our annual recruitment, staffing, and retention update. And our presenter is Anne Glenn Zelsnak, Coordinator, Department of Human Resources. You do? Okay, I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. It was omitted from the agenda, but I am going to start with administrative matters. And I'll start with Mrs. Weems.
Yes, thank you. I would just, I know later tonight, we will have a new chair, possibly a different vice chair, but I just wanted to put this out there for whoever that may be, that I would like to strongly recommend that we form a Career and Workforce Development Committee, since we will be filling in holes of our committees and having the new guys to sign up for new committees. So I think that during the campaign, many of us heard this over and over again about workforce readiness skills, specifically the trade skills. And so I think that we need to move forward with this. So I am recommending that we establish a Career and Workforce Development Committee to assess what we currently have, to assess the needs of the community, and then to figure out how to fill those needs. And I would ask that this committee be comprised of two city council members and two school board members. And then they would meet and decide what appropriate business leaders and military leaders and staff would be on that committee. And I would also ask to have a six-month period, so it doesn't drag on forever, in order to receive a rough draft. And then recommendations by next November, so it will be before session in 2024. I think the need is definitely there for blue-collar work. And I think this is a win-win for the community and a win-win for our students. So if we can make sure that that is done, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, Mrs. Riggs?
And I would like to mention the fact about Newport News and the teacher. I talked to Dr. Richard, Dr. Richard, I talked to Richard today, and asked him if there anything that we could do. And I know that he said that Dr. Spence and Don Robertson have been right there by his side, his and George's side, and, you know, helping them with whatever they need. But I would like to see, he said, next week, you know, the kids hopefully will be back. Like to see, he said he'd reach out to us. I'd like to see us do something demonstrative to help that school, whatever it may be, from us. And so I just wanted to bring that forth and let you guys know that I think that, and I always said something to Dr. Spence about it, that would be something that would be very nice from us, so.
Okay. Anybody else?
My name is on there.
Mrs. Anderson?
So the Workforce Committee that was mentioned, Ms. Weems and I have both championed that idea of doing something similar to that. And I'd like to put my name in the hat for being on that committee when we establish it. So just want to let you know that I've been in favor of that as well. But I do think that we should have some type of a moment of silence to commemorate what the teachers and the students of Newport News have been going through this past week. So I'd just like to have that either now or maybe at the beginning of our meeting. Dr. Spence, if you would, since you're going to be beginning the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, Ms. Woodhouse?
And Ms. Zelsnak?
Good afternoon, and of course, Happy New Year. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resource Officer in the Department of Human Resources. This afternoon, Ms. Anne Glenn Zelsnak, Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention with the Department of Human Resources, will provide an update on recruitment, staffing, and retention, and share what the department is doing to persevere and remain resilient. Without further ado, I turn over the presentation to Ms. Anne Glenn Zelsnak.
Good evening. The agenda for today's presentation includes market conditions and challenges at the national and state level. Our Division regarding Recruitment and Retention. We will discuss factors impacting the supply and demand for teachers and other staff across the United States and here in Virginia Beach. Staffing results from the 2022-2023 school year will be reviewed. Lastly, we will highlight the strategies that the Department of Human Resources has implemented to support schools and departments with recruiting staff. In alignment with Goal Four of the Compass 2025, the Division's Strategic Plan, we always support intentional, focused, and innovative recruitment and retention efforts to provide an exemplary and diversified workforce that supports our core values. Market conditions throughout the United States and in Virginia continue to impact the teacher shortages. Fewer students are entering and completing teacher preparation programs. Teachers are seeking other occupations because their pay is not commensurate with other college-educated peers, which impacts teacher retention. Annually, the Department of Education identifies the critical shortage areas. The top five critical shortage areas for the 2022-2023 school year are elementary education, pre-K to six, middle school education, six through eight, secondary math, special education, and career and technology education. The lack of housing or affordable housing also impacts the decisions that teachers make regarding employment. The United States Government of Accountability Office report examined the teacher shortage nationwide as well as the recruitment and retention challenges and the efforts, the Department of Education's efforts to address these challenges. The national data in this graphic identifies the main challenges to recruiting new teachers to include the negative perception of the teaching profession, the high cost of becoming a teacher, and the differing state licensure requirements. The second half of the graphic shows retention challenges. These include the lack of support for current teachers, school workplace culture, and teacher compensation. The U.S. Department of Education's Title II Report collects data on teacher preparation programs across the United States. In Virginia, teacher preparation programs and programs' invitors increased slightly between the 1920 school year. Between the 1819 school year, there were over 1,600 fewer students enrolled in a teacher preparation program. Additionally, the number fell of completers by 172. Although 2,995 students completed programs, there is no guarantee they will ever enter the workforce as teachers. So what does this mean? If we divide 2,995 students equally among the 134 school divisions in Virginia, each division could potentially hire 22 new teachers. This number is far short of the number of teachers we needed to hire for the 2021-2022 school year. Under the direction of Virginia's General Assembly, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission examined the pandemic's impact on public K-12 education. In their report, they also cited the decline in the number of new teachers joining the workforce. In this graph, the blue dotted line shows the average number of first-time teacher license holders pre-pandemic average. Starting in 2020, there has been an approximate decrease of 1,200 or 15% of first-time teacher license holders entering the workforce. The Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission also looked at the number of teachers leaving the workforce. The number of teachers leaving the profession in Virginia was less after the 2019-20 school year. But there was a substantial spike in teachers leaving the profession after the 2021 school year. With teachers exiting at a rate of 12% higher than the pre-pandemic average, fewer teachers joining the workforce has negatively impacted the teacher pipeline. A review of our school data revealed that 760 teachers retired or resigned during the 2021-2022 school year, and our retention rate declined by 2.5% points between 2020-21 and 2021-22. A Division goal is to improve our teacher retention rate by 3%, which will place us back in the 90th percentile. Based on exit surveys, responses, teachers who resigned indicated that they were leaving for various reasons. Among these were career enhancement, relocation, personal reasons including health-related concerns for themselves or family members, educational advancement, and military transfers. Previously, staffing was robust during early spring through early fall. However, now staffing is a year-long process. In the Department of Human Resources, our motto is, "Recruitment is everyone's responsibility." Despite the challenges just shared with you, determination and collaboration resulted in 35 instructional vacancies at the start of the school year. As of December 5, 2022, we have hired 489 new teachers, which include eight future teacher award winners, comprised of students who completed the Virginia Teacher for Tomorrow program, and 32 acceptances for math, special education, and Spanish immersion. We also offered 194 letters of intent. These early acceptances enabled the Department of Human Resources to identify eligible candidates to fill anticipated vacancies. This would not have been possible without great teamwork and perseverance of our hiring managers, school administrations, administrators, and support from our school board. Despite our success with recruitment and opening the school year with only 35 vacancies, we had 282 VBCPS staff who left the Division between September and December of 2022. A total of 79 teachers exited, 11 due to retirements, and 68 from resignations, and 178 classified staff, which consisted of 33 retirements and 145 resignations. The classified staff include teacher assistants, office associates, custodians, and cafeteria assistants. As of January 6, 2023, there were 67 instructional vacancies, including full and part-time positions. These vacancies have occurred because of retirements, resignations, and new allocations due to increased student enrollment. The Division's ability to attract new applicants has enabled staffing specialists and school administrators to recruit and hire staff from job postings, the substitute pool, and student-teacher school counseling interns. Currently, there are 33 classified vacancies, which include teacher assistants, pre-K, general assistants, special education assistants, library media assistants, security, and office associates. There are 143 custodial and food service vacancies. This does not include seven department custodians and 19 food service central office vacancies that work directly with schools, for a grand total of 169 vacancies. As you recall from the compensation presentation, custodial and food service staff were identified as hard-to-fill positions, and the data continues to support the challenge. After hosting a successful custodial and food service hiring fair in October, these vacancies continue to be hard to fill and have the highest turnover rate. We look forward to the custodial food service hiring event Saturday, February 4, at Bayside High School, from 9:00 to 11:30. In addition to hiring fairs, we also have an extensive print and media campaign that runs throughout the year. We have continued to utilize QR codes on promotional materials that direct candidates to the online application. YouTube advertisements, radio campaigns, and other paid advertisements provide information about VBCPS to candidates beyond our local area. The Virginia Employment Commission's Virginia Workforce Connection provides another resource for VBCPS staff to connect with potential candidates for employment. Interviews through various media outlets allow VBCPS staff to advertise vacancies and upcoming events locally. The Department of Human Resources virtual hiring events, citywide events, and participation in job fairs around the state are other opportunities to recruit our staff. Our newest strategy was implemented this summer, was Walk-Up Wednesdays. During Walk-Up Wednesdays at the School Administration Building, applicants were able to receive assistance with starting an application, asking questions about our Division, and obtain information about our job postings and positions. Another recruitment resource has come from the student teachers and school counseling interns working with our teachers. We've been able to hire 14 December graduates for the spring semester. Finally, VBCPS has an attractive benefits package for its employees that includes competitive pay, pay leave to include major holidays, a wellness program, and retirement plan options. The hiring events that we have hosted have resulted in collaboration with school administrators, the Department of Teaching and Learning, and the Offices of Transportation and Food Services and Custodial Services. We have adopted our recruitment and outreach events to meet the challenges of an ever-changing employment market. A unique combination of virtual and face-to-face events has led to our Division's success in filling our vacancies with talented, qualified, and diverse candidates. An example of one of our most successful campaigns was our driver campaign. We currently have enough draft drivers to cover all of our routes. The Department of Human Resources continues to be energized and motivated to recruit and retain staff for students. Hiring incentives have improved staffing results for custodians, food services, bus drivers, and instructional staff. From the Virginia Department of Education, we have also received the Recruitment Incentive for Public Education, the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Teacher Recruitment and Retention Incentive for eligible teachers. A temporary increase in substitute teacher rates for the second year through ESRA funds is increasing our substitute applicant pool. VBCPS offers early commitment incentives for hard-to-fill positions such as math and special education. Virginia Beach Future Teacher Award winners are joining our team each year. Four award winners will begin employment with the Division during the 2023-24 school year. Our partnership with ODU allows four of our current teacher assistants to attain a master's degree in special education through an accelerated program. The Custodial Substitute Initiative Program allows current non-exempt employees to work additional hours after their workday ends. Of course, we always welcome our retirees to rejoin our team through the Retiree Opportunity Program. The congratulatory retirement letter sent from the Department of Human Resources includes information about the ROP program. In addition to the recruitment strategies mentioned in the previous slides, we have updated and restructured our online application to provide easier access and completion. We continue to hold hiring fairs to meet with applicants and identify staff for various positions in the Division. Announcements and information about these hiring events are posted on vbschools.com, our social media sites, and job search engines. Early commitment agreements and letters of intent are available for the 2023-2024 school year for eligible candidates who have successively interviewed with our hiring teams. The Department of Human Resources, staffing specialists, and teacher retention liaisons are aggressively recruiting student teachers and school counseling interns. 25 international students have been hired to fill vacancies in math, special education, and Spanish immersion. New this year is substitute recruitment at school events. Parents and the community are providing information about the wide range of full-time and part-time employment available with VBCPS. Centralized custodial staffing facilitates the identification of eligible custodial staff to fill vacancies. Despite the national, state, and local recruitment challenges, Virginia Beach City Public Schools recognizes that recruitment is a year-long process. Moreover, we need to support the field of education by promoting programs such as the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, and continue to partner with universities and colleges to place student teachers and school counseling interns, as well as meeting with students during their teacher preparation programs to discuss employment opportunities with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Hiring fairs enable VBCPS to recruit staff and connect with candidates around the United States through various marketing outlets and on our online application. The early commitment incentives for hard-to-fill positions and letters of intent assure candidates of employment with our Division. This inevitably moves us towards being staffed before the start of the school year. Lastly, recruitment begins by sharing information with the community about the incredible work that staff performs every day to support students and their learning. So how can you support Virginia Beach City Public Schools in the recruitment and retention of staff? Elevate the teaching profession. Continue to share the good news about our students, staff, families, and school communities. Speak with family and friends and peers about the opportunities here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Follow, post, and repost information from the Division and HR social media sites to your page. This concludes the Department of Human Resources Recruitment, Staffing, and Retention Update. Mrs. Woodhouse and I are available to address any questions you might have.
Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Franklin.
Hello, great presentation. And I just want to personally thank you for all the hard work and creativity that you all have put into filling these vacancies and hiring. I know that it is an ongoing mission, so great job. I do have a couple of questions, though. One is about food services. I love the fact that we have education and advancement opportunities through food services. We're doing a lot of great things there. Is part of that, almost educating people out of the position now in terms of giving them certifications or different things that, are we finding that we are able to retain them once they get certifications and everything through our Division?
So there are different positions. So there's cafeteria assistant, baker-cook manager. So the certifications they must have, they have to have the food handler's card. So that's the primary certification that they have. And then they have the various hours. So I think the differentiation in the hours is helpful to many of the parents. But the baker-cooker positions, again, are fewer. So again, you start with assistant, and then you move your way up. So I believe that some of those opportunities are just smaller, just because there are fewer positions at the upper level, right?
At the upper, okay, gotcha. So they're just trying to get their hours in order to move up?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, and I'll also add, through working with the Food Services Office, they were able to create a, basically, a ladder that allowed our employees opportunities for advancement. That was the largest concern that we were hearing from our employees, were the opportunities to grow and stay with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I think primarily, based on the data that we have collected, the reason we continue to see the turnover is because they are one of the groups of employees that make the least amount of money as in terms of an hourly wage with Virginia Beach. And of course, when everyone was looking for employees and advanced to the minimum wage of $15 sooner than we did in Virginia Beach, led to the largest cause of turnover for us. And so we are hopeful, and remain hopeful, that the working environment and the opportunities for advancement, a schedule that works with the lives of especially parents and grandparents and family members, and our excellent benefit package will lead those employees to return to us and, of course, help us to retain the ones we currently have.
And my second question is, are we utilizing the PTAs to get the word out there right now through events and through different opportunities there in all the schools?
That has not been one of our major communications. We primarily work with the building administrators, asking that they put information into their flyers. Just currently this year, we started really connecting with the school and joining the PTAs with some of their events to do recruitment. And our focus has primarily been with our Title I schools, but we also look to expand that as well.
Well, I hope we do, because actually I went to a trunk retreat in the fall. And that's just huge opportunities there to get in front of parents, so.
We totally agree, and we would definitely reach out to them. We are always looking to partner with our organizations, especially our PTAs and PTAs in the high schools.
And then lastly, when are we going to get an update on the employee, Enhanced Employee Input Process? And how many meetings have we had so far?
Okay, good thing I just looked that one up. Actually, our meeting is scheduled for February twenty-eighth. We conclude the two scheduled meetings that we have in January, one being face-to-face, the other Zoom, virtually via Zoom. And then we have separate meetings for some of our division service staff. So the Department of HR will bring that update back to the board on February twenty-eighth during your regularly scheduled School Board Workshop meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And since you mentioned homegrown, are we able to increase the number of future teacher winners?
I'll let Anne speak to that, go right ahead, Anne.
I just had this conversation with Sarah Lockett. So we did talk about how that would look. So essentially, I mean, all of them could get an award. They still have to complete the process, that's the bigger thing, is making sure that they have fulfilled the course requirements. And so we're not just...
Willy-nilly.
Yes, so there's some discussion that still remains. I think the bigger thing is, again, making sure that the students really want to do that. And that's why that discussion about what is the exit criteria that's already taking place? How are schools going to provide that information to students to make sure that they have ample time? If they're interested in participating in that process? Because normally, you know, someone might say, oh, well, I think, you know, Suzie's better than me, and I might not do it. So we have some opportunities to get the word out, and we just needed to have that discussion and make sure it's clear.
So what is the return on that investment? Because I had a student who won that one year, and she did not come back here. So what is that percentage?
So I told you four, we have two more people that we were contacting. We have total of six right now. So usually, I mean, it's still early, we still have by January or February to be notified, towards the end of January, February, to be notified whether the students are returning. So on average, we're looking at eight, an average of eight a year, and I have to go back each year and look at that because we have the data.
Okay.
But I thought six to eight students are on average.
Let me also add, and Ms. Melnick, I do want to add, when you talk about increasing the number of contracts or basically, we call them letters of intent because until the budget is approved, we can't officially offer contracts. This year, for the first time, we will extend that to any student who is participating in their high school VTFT program and express interest on returning. But also, please rest assured, we believe in homegrown.
Yeah.
Any of our students, no matter how many years between graduating and finishing their program, who express interest in Virginia Beach, we definitely make them a priority.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Manning?
Thank you. So I wanted to just make some of my new colleagues aware of how much money we put into our health benefits package. We put a significant amount of money into our health benefits because we were kind of behind some of our competing school divisions in the region. And my question for you is, that just went into effect in January, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have not...
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have not necessarily seen the impact of that in our retention and hiring.
Absolutely correct.
So that could be an impact that we see over the next few months.
That will be a very positive impact. And for the board, new board members, because the experienced ones recognize, there were eight, it was eight point five million dollars put towards the benefit package for our employees, which substantially reduced the out-of-pocket premium costs. We are still receiving kudos, thank yous, and appreciations. Even though they have not seen it, they will see it in this next paycheck. But we were able, through the Benefits Office, to put out the new scale so family members could see what they would now be paying, and the reduction in those out-of-pocket costs were significant.
They're very significant, and probably even a whole lot better than in the private sector, so I will say. My next question is, under our current instructional vacancies, when you're giving us these numbers, do these numbers mean that all of the positions, for example, current instructional vacancies, we have sixty-seven? Does that mean in all other positions, we have permanent employees in those positions? Or could some of those positions be temporarily filled?
So for us, if it's not a full-time certified teacher, it's considered a vacancy. We do have, in some of our positions, those who are going the alternate route and working towards licensure. But those, the numbers you see there are true vacancies and currently are filled with either a long-term substitute in some situations, other outside organizations that we've worked with to staff positions. So although we have those current positions posted, they are all covered within our schools.
Okay, so long-term subs are included in the numbers. Do we know how many long-term subpositions we have, or could you get that to me?
I could get that to you. I don't have it offhand, but we'll definitely make note and get that to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and now we move on to the childcare program introduction. And welcome again Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Seeing if we can get the clicker to work. If not, we thank Regina very much, she is always so helpful. Yes. I have fewer clicks, too. Okay. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resource Officer in the Department of Human Resources. As Ms. Anne Glenn Zelznak, Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention, just shared in the previous presentation, the Department of Human Resources remains focused on staffing. We would not be able to staff our vacancy without the efforts of all as recruitment is everyone's responsibility. For the purpose of today's presentation is to provide the board with an update on another recruitment and retention initiative: childcare. During this presentation, I will cover how the childcare update aligns with the Division's Strategic Plan, Compass to 2025, introduce those who serve on the Planning Committee, review the timeline of events, share the results from the interest survey from the Title I staff participants, where are we with Phase One implementation, the next steps for Phase One implementation, and our future plans, which includes Phase Two implementation. As with everything we do, our work supports Compass to 2025, the Division's Strategic Plan. This childcare presentation supports both Goals Four and Goals Five. Specifically within Goal Four, an exemplary diversified workforce, where Strategy Three under Goal Four states, "Supports intentional, focused, and innovative recruitment and retention efforts to increase the diversity and quality of various applicant pools." Also, Goal Five, as we cultivate mutually supportive partnerships to support our staff, which directly supports the well-being of our students. The Planning Committee consisted of Virginia Beach City Public Schools staff and community members, beginning with Don Robertson, Chief of Staff, Harry Young, Director, Out-of-School Time Programs with Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation, Jamie Childress, Vice President of Youth Development with the YMCA, Seth Foster, Regional Director, YMCA, Sarah Lockett, Director, Technical and Career Education, Darnita Tropman, Director, Employees Services, and myself, representing Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Early on in the planning process, it was recognized quickly that the idea of providing a childcare program was not the division's area of expertise. We are so appreciative for the leadership, collaboration, and partnership of Mr. Harry Young, Mr. Jamie Childress, and Mr. Seth Foster. Together, Mr. Young and Mr. Childress have a combined total of fifty-three years in the industry, plenty of experience for proper guidance during this process. Mr. Young has twenty-eight years in youth development and seventeen years here with Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation. And Mr. Childress, seventeen years with the YMCA of Southampton Roads, and also in his twenty-fifth year in the profession, all with the YMCA, previously in Richmond, Virginia. Also, Mr. Childress did share he's married to a school teacher, resides here in Virginia Beach, where both of their children attend public schools. So if I could please ask the Planning Committee members in attendance this afternoon to please stand and be recognized. The childcare planning timeline began in March, where the topic surfaced as a possible recruitment and retention initiative. During the months of August and September, the first brainstorming meeting was held with division staff. Also, this gave us the opportunity to investigate other school divisions that offer childcare to their employees. During the month of October, the first meeting of the Full Planning Committee was held. In November, members of the Department of Human Resources met virtually with staff from Carrollton, Texas regarding their childcare program. The meeting was extremely beneficial, as the staff shared about their success, their challenges, and some of the do's and don'ts in the first year of implementation. Also, in November, the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability launched the Childcare Interest Survey to Title I staff, and the results were reviewed by the Full Planning Committee. In December, the Planning Committee meetings continued and increased in frequency. Also, during one of the December meetings, the committee had the opportunity to tour preschool classrooms at the Technical and Career Education Center. A special thank you to Mr. David Swanger, Director, his staff and students, who willingly shared the highlights of the program. As indicated previously, the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability administered an online survey to the staff at all seventeen Title I schools. Although the survey reflects a twenty-five percent response rate, please keep in mind, not all staff have children, nor are they seeking childcare. The data results indicated a true need and interest within the division, as fifty-eight percent of those participating indicated they are very interested in a program at either VB Parks and Rec... Recreation or the YMCA. About forty percent, which is seventy-six children, are in need of a full-day program option, and an additional thirty percent, fifty-eight children, are interested in the before-and-after-school care option. The majority of the children are between the ages of three and ten, with twenty-six children under the age of two. Remember again, this data only reflects staff who participated from our seventeen Title I schools. Phase One implementation will be as follows. Childcare will be offered only to staff serving in one of the seventeen Title I schools. That's fifteen elementary schools and two middle schools, as these schools traditionally are more challenging to staff. Both VB Parks and Recreation and the YMCA will offer a select number of available spots and/or expand capacity, which is yet to be determined, at their current centers for children ages three and four only for the upcoming 2023 and 24 school year. VB Parks and Rec, the cost of each program spot also is to be determined. And also recognized, VB Parks and Recreation also offers before-and-after-school care options of some kind in all of our division elementary schools. In addition, the YMCA will offer a fifty percent reduction to the registration costs and the member rate for our employees with children selected for one of the available spots. Both programs open registration in April, so it will be important to have the plan finalized in February and marketing as a recruitment and retention initiative. Virginia Beach City Public Schools will draft a Memorandum of Understanding, an MOU, to document the ongoing partnership with VB Parks and Rec and a newly established partnership with the YMCA, while the Department of Human Resources will develop a decision matrix to guide the selection process. So the timeline for next steps for Phase One implementation includes finalizing the number of seats available in existing Virginia Beach Parks and Rec and YMCA sites. Also, to develop, finalize, and communicate the selection protocols of all available spots to staff in our Title I schools. Staff in our Title I schools will need to make their selections and complete an admissions application with either program. The Department of Human Resources will verify Title I school employment. Virginia Beach Parks and Rec, as well as YMCA staff, will notify applicants of their selection and if any financial support offered by either organization is available to offset childcare costs. So currently, with Virginia Beach Parks and Rec, they offer a fifty percent reduced fee for families receiving financial assistance through eligible programs managed by the Department of Human Resources and/or the Department of Housing. The reduced fees applies to school-based before-and-after-school programs and their early childhood programs based at our recreation centers. Also, Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation offers students who have a free or reduced lunch letter, they may receive as well fifty percent fee reduction in the rise after-school programs at Virginia Beach City Public Schools, school designated as a Title I school. Impressive. Also, the YMCA offers, as a nonprofit organization with a mission to serve all people, they offer financial assistance through their Open Doors program to families with demonstrated financial needs. Designed to meet each family's situation, the Open Doors program follows a sliding fee scale that provides assistance of up to forty percent for weekly fees. Funding for the Open Door program is made possible through donations to the YMCA's annual giving campaign. Additionally, the YMCA is an approved subsidy vendor with the Virginia Department of Social Services, which helps families pay a portion of the cost of care. And for us in HR, we often hear our families make tough decisions on whether or not both parents will work based around childcare. So I was thoroughly impressed to hear about all that Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation, as well as the YMCA offers. And that's why I took a little extra time to read that. So those who are listening will understand that there is financial assistance there available based on qualifications. So with our Phase Two, our future plans consist of the following possibilities: expansion of the Memorandum of Expansion of the Memorandum of Understanding with VB Parks and Recreation and the YMCA. This expanded MOU will allow both organizations to open childcare classrooms in Title I schools depending upon interest and childcare staff availability for ages three and four-year-olds. To seek consideration for financial support, whether it be through a retention and recruitment request to our school board or various grants available to offset childcare costs in these programs. Expand work experiences and internships for Virginia Beach City Public School students in early childhood education courses with potential agreements of guaranteed hiring into the field upon graduation and earning the necessary credentials. Work towards future recognition as a model partnership between Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation, and the YMCA. And with that, this concludes the presentation of the childcare program update. Members of the Planning Committee and I are available to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, so first I see Mrs. Anderson and then Ms. Owens.
Okay, so I'm a little slow on this. I wasn't, I'm not sure how, exactly how many facilities you indicated would be, we would be working with. Were you indicating that all seventeen schools would have one facility?
So currently in Phase One, which would be for the upcoming school year, we will work directly with Virginia Beach Parks and Rec and the YMCA, and we will utilize sites at their current location. In the future, our goal is to open classrooms staffed by Virginia Beach Parks and Rec staff and YMCA in our Title I schools. And most likely, it would definitely not be all seventeen. We would start slowly, maybe one or two classrooms in two schools on opposite sides of town, or based upon the needs survey that we will continue to put out to our staff. So that's a future goal, but not for this upcoming school year.
Okay, so for the upcoming school year, twenty-three, twenty-four, how many schools would that entail?
It would, it would not entail opening classes at any schools. It would only entail the staff at the seventeen Title I schools. And if they opt in and are selected for participation, then their children will attend the current locations by VB Parks and Rec and the YMCA.
Okay, for their school, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I get it. Now, thank you.
Not a problem at all. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Owens and then Ms. Brown.
Yep, thank you. I am very excited to hear about this. Childcare is one of the things that I was hoping we would be able to get to at some point as an incentive. Wanted to make sure I understood the, how, the coverage. Is the plan that our district will basically cover the full tuition? Are we paying a portion?
Currently at this time, we are not paying any portions. They would submit their application and work directly with staff from Virginia Beach Parks and Rec and YMCA to see if they qualify for the number of discounted or sliding scale opportunities from both of those organizations.
Gotcha. So the, I guess the incentive or the partnership at this point is that they are holding some slots available for our, our staff members rather than them having to compete?
Yes, ma'am. Either holding or expanding spots at their current locations. Yes, ma'am. So that's Phase One. Yes, ma'am.
And in future phases, is there any plan to provide some assistance? I know, obviously, we have staff members who are at an income level where they are receiving benefits, so they're going to qualify perhaps for the assistance from the organizations. But for those of our staff members who are just above that, will the school district be able to assist to make it an incentive?
That was what was referred to in Phase Two as a potential future discussion with the board, where we would want to come back and talk with the full board about whether or not that kind of retention and/or recruitment incentive would be something we would put into a budget package. But that is not in our plans for the next school year or the next budget.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Correct. And in the meantime, our staff will continue to look to see if there are grants that also support childcare, whether it be state-funded or other monies available as well.
Okay, good start.
Okay, Ms. Brown and then Ms. Manning.
Thank you so much for putting this together. I just have one question. You said there's a respondent rate of twenty-five percent of our staff in the Title I schools. Can you please tell me what number of respondents there is? How many respondents there were?
Okay, I don't have the survey actually in front of me, but I would definitely get back with you on that total question. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Manning.
Well, first I want to thank the YMCA and the Parks and Rec and everybody for your efforts on this and your partnership. We really appreciate that. My question is perhaps to them, but, but you might, you might be able to answer it first. It's, you know, I know in light of all of our staffing issues and being able to staff our positions, is this going to be a burden on Parks and Rec and YMCA to provide staffing for this, these increased numbers? Basically, do you think you can have the staff to support the increase?
We hope to.
Okay. All right, so obviously.
We're in a good, we're in a good place with staffing currently.
Okay.
So we are optimistic.
So. Okay, all right, great. So that's, that's in the plan. Okay, thank you.
And we did have those discussions, and every year, our decision in terms of how many families and staff members we can support will be based on staff available with both of those programs.
Excellent. Okay, Ms. Weems.
Yes, thank you. So year after next, when we're trying to open up classrooms in some of these schools. So obviously, we're going to open up classrooms in the schools that have empty classrooms. Do we have that many schools that have complete, empty classrooms? First of all, that's my first question.
Now, right now, and I know Mr. Friedman's in the room, right now, our future plans, we're looking at only two schools. So we're not looking at all seventeen Title I schools.
Yeah, I knew all seventeen, but okay.
We will definitely use the building utilization reports, work with division services to explore, to ensure that the space is there. And we're also only discussing one or two classrooms in those particular locations. So the schools that are selected or potentially be on the list for selection will only be based around availability.
Okay, yeah, yes, because I've served many years on the BUC, and to have just free space and free rooms is a luxury that I don't remember us having much of. My next question is when we have, and I'll just pick Diamond Springs. So say that they have space, and we open up one classroom for this program for the three and four-year-olds. And then the next year, the year after, the BUC comes back and says, oh, they built a whole new apartment complex condos right there. Now it looks like we're going to have an influx, so we're going to need that space. I mean, is it something that could actually fluctuate? Say you have daycare this year, but you don't next year, and then you do next year, and you don't next year, and all that?
Yes, the short answer would be yes. Our goal will be to accommodate and to continue to offer to the families that are already in the program. So we may have to say to them, we're closing the location at Diamond Springs, but we're opening a location and try to stay in that same close proximity. And again, that's, you know, for the future years down the line. So yes, that could occur, but we would definitely have early communication, give them their options, and work with them to maybe secure a spot in another location with either Parks, Virginia Beach Parks and Rec or the YMCA. But there's always that possibility based on as well staffing. You know, again, we, we will do our best to accommodate, but we can only do what both Virginia Beach Parks and Rec and the YMCA are able to accommodate.
Yes, and yes, thank you, because I know that about a year ago or so, we were hearing about the struggles of your staffing as well. So I'm glad that y'all are in a good spot. My last question is, I'm assuming if I'm a teacher at Diamond Springs, and I have applied for this, and I make the list or whatever, and I actually teach in that building, would I get priority for my child to be in that location in that building since I actually teach in there?
I was about to say, not the upcoming year, the upcoming year, but in two years. Well, it depends on where the facility, what schools we select.
But I'm just using, whatever school, do I get a priority as a teacher if I actually teach in that school?
We, that would be our hope, to minimize the transportation piece. But I don't want to say yes, because it depends on when they fill out their application, first come, first served, how many spots are available. I mean, you know, if you wait, just because there's a spot in that school doesn't mean you're going to get one. So we would encourage early application so that we can secure those. And so that's, that's what we'll have to do in terms of responding.
And I, I think it would be fair to say, Ms. Woodhouse, that that would be part of what was described as human resources staff determining the eligibility criteria and how that would work. And so we'd have more information available on that after we explored that.
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Simone.
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And I guess my question kind of maybe builds off that on the selection process, and it may not be fully hammered out yet. I'm anticipating some level of first come, first serve in the application process. With the goal of having registration in April, do we know if the opening the program within our district is going to coincide with the opening of the programs for the general public? So for instance, if I am looking for childcare, and I know that Parks and Recs open up their thing on a certain day, the parents are waiting, and they are at midnight, whatever, we are trying to get in. If I am doing that, because I don't know if I'm going to get in with the school, and my child does get into the Parks and Rec program, and then the school one opens up, is that child being, I don't know, transferred from one list to the other? Is it holding a spot, moving a spot?
In all of our earlier conversations, the idea is that the application process would be opened earlier for our staff. So by at least a couple of weeks, our staff will have the opportunity to get their application in first. Hence why we know we have to push that communication, because I hate to say it, if you snooze, you could definitely lose. We know the demands for childcare, and they have not changed. Yes, ma'am. And also, thank you, Dr. Baniki, was able to pull the information up. We had a total of three hundred and fifty-three people respond to the survey.
That's great. Well, we look forward to more conversations in the future. This is great. This is so forward-thinking. I thank you. And with that.
Thank you.
I will read into closed as we, yes. Do you need to adjust this? This one's good? Okay. All right, I move at the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions from open meeting law set forth in Code of Virginia, Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. And eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, appointment of a hearing officer for a discrimination complaint, appeal hearing, and B, pending litigation matters. I made the motion. I just need a second. You're hitting the. Sorry, I like the buttons. We need to add back in a matter that we took off. I can read it off the agenda for you. Give me a second. I'm adding a C? Correct. Okay.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, I'm going to add in also subsection two, two-point-two-three-seven-eleven of the Code of Virginia, subsection two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education, the Commonwealth, or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, if the student is minor, the student's parents or guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony, presentation, or evidence at a closed session. If such student or parents or guardians so request, anybody in such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board and also Code of Virginia two-point-two-three-seven-one-one to deliberate on section nineteen, discussion of plans to protect public safety that relates to terrorist activity or specific cyber security threats or vulnerabilities, and a briefings by staff, legal counsel, or law enforcement or emergency services officials concerning actions taken, respond to such matters or related threat to public safety, discussion of information subject to exclusion in subdivision two or fourteen of section two-point-two-three-seven-oh-five-point-two, where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person and the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons of such building, facility, building, or structure. And this would be subsection, namely discuss C, security matters in response to a specific school incident, student discipline matter. This is what was in the agenda as published online. We took it out, but we are going to add it back in.
Okay, additions noted. I made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Ms. Anderson. All in favor, please raise your hand. We have ten ayes. The motion did pass. Oh, who's, oh, who's missing?
Jessica went to the bathroom.
Oh, okay. We have ten ayes. We can go into closed. Okay. All right.
We did think that the subsection add, we weren't ready, but we will, we added that.
We did think that the subsection add, we weren't ready, but we will, we've added that.